February 23rd.
Good morning.
Yeah, good morning.
Absolutely. Keisha Johnner?
Here.
Mark Ramey?
Here.
Steve McCombs?
Here.
Would entertain a motion to approve this morning's agenda?
Make motion to approve today's agenda.
Second?
McCombs?
Aye.
Ramey?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
Jake, any communication received?
Yes, sir.
At some point, I'm gonna make a note. Counselor, when we receive phone calls coming through public email addresses, should we record those as communications?
Yes.
We should. Jake, we need to make a note of that for the next agenda to do that. Because those are public correspondence. I was thinking about that the other day when we got phone calls.
Okay, so it's just to the you guys as board members or?
Right. Well, I'd be to you as well. Because traditionally, we turn around and we say, if Jake got an email address or a letter back in the day, you got a letter with a stamp on it, addressed to the board of supervisors, it would be read openly before it took action. But if you get a phone call, then it only makes sense that I received a phone call from Mary Smith at 123 Main Street that wanted to talk about this. That should be reported as public as well.
Right. It's not that we have to go into the details of phone.
Right.
We just report that received communication from the public on X topic or whatever.
Okay.
So, no, make a note of that. Thank you, Counselor. I was thinking about that the other day.
That should be the same thing. Public comments, this is the portion of our agenda the public can speak on items not on this morning's agenda. The board cannot act on those items, but they could be topics for future board supervisor meetings. Are there any public comments, items not on this morning's agenda? Looking up at the board. Emily, I'm not seeing anything on chat.
Correct.
Okay, I'm not seeing any public comments here from 3014. So, we move on. Now, entertain a motion on this morning's consent agenda.
Motion to approve today's consent agenda.
Second?
Ramey?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
Very good, on to business. First item is a discussion around variant counting employee benefits renewal. Lisa?
Well, today we have Cindy and Gail from Holmes Murphy to bring you the renewal for the employee benefits. So, I will just turn it over to Cindy.
Okay, well, good morning.
Good morning.
Inside your packet, we brought you just a quick little packet of stuff to talk through today. The agenda's on page two there. We're gonna go through some of your medical experience, then talk through the renewal. Same thing with dental and vision. We've got life and disability options available that we brought to talk about, then our other benefit renewals, a little bit of compliance stuff, and then an appendix, you know, great reading material for the evening. On page three is really just a history page. And this is just kind of, we walk through this every year with you just to remind you where we were last year at this time, what we're looking at this year for renewal. So, this is kind of just an executive summary of what we've got to talk about today. When you go through the medical plans today, you have three medical plans. You can see last year, your overall renewal was 8.2 and was negotiated down to 6.61. We have a 10.48% increase this year. For the HMO piece, that was a 10.35 on that piece. The PPO got a 10.54 and the high deductible health plan got 10.49. So, when you break them down. The dental plan is looking for a 0.2% increase, and we will chat more about that in a little bit. Excuse me. The voluntary vision plan that you have today is in a rate guarantee until 2022 with a no change to your current rates. So, those will not be changing. On page four, your flexible spending account, the basic life and disability. Both of those are no change in rates. The voluntary life also no change, and COBRA also no change. So, the rest of those, there's no change in those costs. As we get into page five, you'll see the medical claims experience. Now, this is the experience, remember, that we poll, and we do it based on the time period that Wellmark's gonna look at your renewals. So, it's November of 19 through October of 2020. And what you're looking at here on the left, you'll see at a glance at the bottom. So, we ended up at a gross loss ratio of 97.1%, meaning that of the premiums that you paid, 97.1% of them were paid out in claims on your behalf. The target runs between 80 to 85. So, we're a little higher than where we would expect to be on target. Once you take out the pooling credit, meaning those claims over $75,000, it does drop down to 84%, which kind of gets us there. But we do know we have some large claimants and things that are going on. If you go to page six, Wellmark's done a nice job of kind of giving us some notes of their, of the renewal and what their underwriter, excuse me, underwriter thought of the renewal. So, from their perspective and what we're seeing, and we kind of agree with this, their loss ratio, you're currently at 95%. They expect you to complete at 102%, meaning the claims that have been incurred but not yet paid will be around 102%. So, you actually, they've paid out, if you look at it in a dollar and cents, for every dollar you put in, they paid a dollar or two, which is never a good place for us to be in.
So, I just wanna add, excuse me.
Go ahead.
I just wanna add, so claims to premium dollar, right? We're all good business people, so we're, Wellmark is paying more than they're getting from us.
Right.
And that's just claim to premium dollar. That doesn't contemplate heat, light, water, customer service, ID cards, the nurses, the call-ins, the people managing the network, you know, the network access, all of that. That's just claims, and that doesn't contemplate any profit for Wellmark either.
So, I wanna make sure I understand what you're saying. Are you saying that for the, for any rate adjustments through our program, they are excluding any administrative or operational overhead? Or that is included?
No. What, the rate increase, it is included.
Okay.
But what she's saying is that if we know that, okay, so if you look at their website, it will say like 86.4 or something like that cents on the dollar is paid out. And then that other 14 cents that they get or whatever is, they use that for the administrative fees, you know, commissions, state taxes, every, all of that is that part. And so, what she's saying is that the claims come in at 102%, but they still have another 14% on top of that that they're paying that's not showing up.
So, the combined is 116.
Correct, yes.
Yeah, if you were, if you were running a gas station and you bought gas at a dollar, right?
Right.
And you needed to sell it at a dollar 20 to make money, if we just look at your premium to claims, there's no money being made here.
But our last, so Cindy, I'm sure you'll talk about this, our last, other than the last two years, we've had some years running where we've had where they have made money.
Extremely, right, yeah, right, exactly right. So, and that's what they tell us in the next bullet point is that really our claims have run higher in the last two periods than what their manual rate is. And a manual rate for them is like a demo, like they just put their demographics, you know, of your population in there where you, where, you know, zip codes and all of that. Our per contract, per member claims have also increased about 22% and 2% over the last two periods. So, basically, what they're telling us is that claims are up, which we know. We have two really large claimants that are expected to continue. So, that's, that's not going to change for us. If you go to the next page, really, this is a good kind of scenario or synopsis of what you can see here as far as from a large claims perspective. So, for 2019 to 2020, that November to October that we were just talking about, we had 42 large claimants. So, that's all, that's on page nine, um, seven, sorry.
Okay, all right.
Sorry, sorry.
No, you're fine.
On page seven there, so 42 of those large claimants are over $10,000. If you go to the graph at the bottom, you'll see that what they expect is 32. We had 39 over 10 and three that were over $75,000. And then you can see how that compares to the previous year. They would expect three over 75, and we have three over 75. So, that's not, you know, that much more than where they would really expect us to have there. When you look at our future cost predicted at the bottom, you can see that they have one large claimant that's expected to be 50 to 100,000. And then we have four potential other ones that are coming through. We have one large claimants that are gonna have the, we expect their claims to be from 100 to 200, and one where they expect it to be 200 to 300. So, those are kind of the ongoing, and those get put, you know, right back into your rate, which is really where our 10% comes from. The next page really comes from the annual recording that Wellmark does for us. So, this is just a good synopsis for us to talk about and figure out, you know, are, do we have a good network? Are people utilizing the network? Are the, you know, are they utilizing the preventive services? We want that to continue to go on. How does ER look? So, it's just kind of a good round about, you know, what's actually being paid through the, through the plan. So, 99.4% of your utilization was in network. So, we don't really have an issue with the network. You know, Wellmark has a really great network. From a preventive service perspective, we have 55.3% of our members have less than 1,000 in claims. The Wellmark benchmark is 63.5%. So, we have a few more, or, you know, we have less people getting claims over, claims under 1,000 than the book of business. 25.1% of our members have less than 250 in claims. And it does seem like, you know, we would be happy that when people are having low claims or zero claims. But that really kind of bites us sometimes because at the end of the day, we want them to be having our preventive service. So, this is all, you know, kind of talking through the preventive service. We did see from a COVID perspective, one thing that we've noticed in our full Holmes Murphy block of business is that, you know, obviously, the doctors' offices were closed for three months.
Right.
So, most of our clients, you know, lost three months of claims experience during that time because nobody was going. So, that should have been helping us. If that was to help us in our, in your, you know, in your, when you look at your claims, we're, you know, gonna finish over 100%, which is a little unusual for this year because of COVID.
Yeah, so the way you could analyze this, Cindy, is severity counts.
Right. And I think also that you, yes, agree, 100%.
Yeah.
The other thing, I think that we, we've also seen happening is that people really aren't necessarily getting their preventive services. So, we kind of see that a little bit into your data as well when we see that 55% versus 65 and so forth. And a lot of that is because I'm 50 years old and I need a colonoscopy. Well, people don't wanna go to the hospital right now. Like, there's just, you know, some, some.
Reluctant.
Reluctant, thank you. For.
And there's probably gonna be a lingering effect.
Yes.
As well. It's not just gonna result itself because people wear or do, yeah.
Whatever, whatever they're doing.
I gotta be careful. It's going to linger on into 2022.
Correct, you're absolutely right. And what we're wondering is.
I don't wanna be called an acolyte again.
What, what we're wondering is, you know, is, are people also not having their services that are, you know, elective? So, not only the preventive, but then you have your elective services also. So, that also could play into numbers for next year as well. So, we just will keep our, kind of our eye on what's happening there.
This is a different topic, but for, probably for us, Lisa, is there a way that we could talk with our hospitals? And just to inform employees, hey, it's safe to go to the hospital so they are getting the preventative care. We just probably need to make a note of that. And remind people about the benefits, remind people what we have.
And we usually do that during our meetings, our open enrollment time, is that we usually plug the, don't forget your preventative services, here's the ACA list of preventative services, so.
I mean, everybody's had their issues this COVID, during this process.
Right.
But our hospitals have done as well as anybody in the state. And I, they take patient safety very seriously. So, I wanna just encourage our folks to go.
And I believe that that, we can use that as a target during enrollment too, that we usually keep reminding them, don't forget to do your preventative services.
Okay, very good, yeah.
Good point, thank you.
Thank you.
As we continue down that page, you can see that our ER utilization is better than the Wellmark benchmark at 336 per visit versus 396 for the book of business. So, that's, that's encouraging. Our pharmacy also, the plate amount per year, 964 versus Wellmark's benchmark at 1,081. I always like to look at the generic, 88.3% generic prescriptions versus Wellmark's 87.2. So, at the next bullet point, you see it says 1.3% opportunity. The Wellmark benchmark is 1.9. So, what that means is there's only 1.3% of an opportunity to get to increase the number, the amount of generic medications because there, you know, if, the ones that are being, everybody's taking the generic that they can. There's only about 1.3% additional opportunity there. That's what they're saying.
So, a good, so a good utilization of generic medication?
Yes, so absolute, so three things. So, your employees are asking for generic, your pharmacists are filling generic, and your doctors are writing generic. And that is the best in two ways. It saves money for the plan, and it saves money for the employees. So, that is a really, that's a very good statistic to, if you wanna, you know, boost your employees, that's a really good statistic to have out there. You're gonna pat them on the back.
A couple of years ago, we put the, sorry, I can't see you. We put, we put the, the drug deductible in place. And so, we talk about that at new hires, that if you take generics, you don't have to meet that deductible. So, we talk about that in length. So, and when we, when we wrote that out, I mean, I think our, this shows that our employees did listen. So, kudos to them because they're doing what we've asked them to do.
Excellent, excellent, very good.
The only other thing on this page that I would talk about a little bit is the specialty medications. We continue to see specialty just keeps going up and up. And right now, where you're sitting is 317 per member per year on a specialty medication cost, but the benchmark for Wellmark is 535. So, it's good for you to, for us to know that that's lower. But just knowing that where the benchmark is, that, that, that could, it's one of the places that we're seeing a lot of increase in cost since with specialty medications. The claims experience, the next page. What we're showing you here, it's kind of a lot of numbers. But basically, if you look under the first graph where it says total under 1,000, so we're looking at claims that are less than 1,000, what does that look like overall for all of your, for the whole year, not just preventive this time? We're at 55.3%, where the benchmark is 63.5%, which is what we talked about before in your preventive. But then if you look over to the right, 55.3% of your members had less than $1,000, but it was only 4.2% of your cost. So, you're tracking with me?
Yep.
And so, then when you go over 75,000, that was 0.9% of your members. Less than 1% of your member had 24%, 23.9% of your claims. So, it just kind of shows you then, you know, what's really happening and where that money is.
I mean, and that's exactly why we have insurance.
Right.
You know, you're big, you've got low usage on the top, usage in the middle, and then usage on the high end. And that's, that's the concept of insurance.
So, page 10 really gets into our, am I over, am I?
No, you're fine.
You're fine, you're fine.
No, you have no problem.
Okay. So, at 1:00, you're not gonna kick me out?
Until Mark says you're done.
Maybe, you think, for the 10 minutes?
Yeah, or, yeah, maybe, yeah.
I wanna give, I wanna give Stephen Keisha a chance to ask questions and.
Yes. It won't take long. I think we're pretty, getting pretty close here.
Okay.
So, the next page is actually the renewal itself. And this will show you, when you look at this, there's three plans. So, you see at the top, 1,000 HMO, our 1,000 PPO, and our 3,500 high deductible health plan. Down the left side is how many lives, how many employee lives? So, the number of employees on each of those plans. Then you see beside that what the current premium is for those plans, what the renewal premium will be for those plans. And then at the bottom, what the increase is as far as a percentage. Overall, if you go to the bottom of the chart, it shows you overall, we're today currently 1.9 million, and it's gonna go to 2.1, which is about a 10.4, it's 10.48%. Or 200,000 in $21 increase. The next page, we did two different contribution strategies for you here. So, page 11 is just simply, this is what we're doing today, and this is what our rates are today. So, we can kind of skip through that because we did give you what the differences are on the next page. Page 12 says utilizing the same contribution strategy that we have today, where the employee pays 95%, the family, I'm sorry. You are paying 95%, the employee pays 5%. The family, I mean, the family side, you're paying 77, and they're paying 23%. So, then this is showing you breaking that new premium that we just talked about out by employee cost versus employer cost. And at the bottom, in the purple, is where you see, looking at that, what does that do from an increase to the employee and an increase to the county? So, 35,000 is what, leaving the same, everything the same. 35,105.06 is the increase that the employee will pick up, and the county will be 164,916.22. And when you add those two together, that's the $200,000 that we talked about on the previous page. So, as we kind of started through the process this year, we also talked about what if we change the way we do our contributions, and we have a buy-up and a buy-down plan? So, what we did here is we based the buy-up and buy-down on the $1,000 HMO. And so, you see, we still use the same 95% and 77% for you folks. Then it's a matter of taking the employer cost that you paid for this, the Wellmark, or through the $1,000 HMO, and applying the same employer cost to the other two plans. Okay? And that then takes the 568.41 for a single is more than what the premium is on the high deductible health plan. So, what we've done there is taken that difference in premium and added it to the $125 that you give in the HSA as part of their HSA. So, every employee gets the same dollar contribution from the county. You can do it that way. You, I mean, you're already putting 124 in there, or 125 in their HSA, so that's a decision that, that you have to make. But then you can see below the, the $1,000 HMO plan, the employee costs are exactly the same as they were on the, and, you know, that split is the same.
Yep.
But then on the PPO, their costs are going up significantly. And then on the high deductible health plan, their cost, their cost would go down. So, you can see kind of the shift there in, in what would happen with the employee premium if you, if you did that.
That's interesting to see. That really shifted.
It shifts.
Right.
So, you then have a decision. I mean, you know, and, and this looks like it's a big shift, and a lot of money's going to shift that way. But more than likely, your population is going to shift into a different plan. So, what I would expect to happen is that some folks that aren't comfortable with the high deductible health plan are gonna move to the HMO plan. The network is very similar, the costs are similar. So, there would be, unless they need services outside of Iowa, there really, it would be this, basically, the same network. So, that's, that would, is what I would expect to happen is that most of these people, would you agree with that too?
I totally agree.
Most of these people would probably shift into the HMO piece. So, you know, that, that's what would, which would.
Say that again, though. Are you talking about the?
So, the H, the PPO that are 1,000, those 64 and 48, because that's where most of your population sits.
They would switch over to.
They probably are gonna switch to HMO.
Okay.
I mean, all of them may not, but I would expect them probably.
In Iowa, it really is no difference in terms of the network.
Right.
It's absolutely no different. I think there's one doctor in Northwest Iowa, you know, way north of Spencer. The people who would stay are comfortable with care, direct access care, University of Iowa, all the hospitals in Des Moines. The people who would choose to have that are the ones who need to go to the Mayo Clinic or need to go to Johns Hopkins or the University of Chicago.
Okay.
Something like that. And, you know, all, all you need to do is offer that. And then you're kind of doing the thing that the world is doing now, was if we know someone is a high user and they're going to a place where we don't have a good contract, then they pay a little more, right? That's just kind of like if you're gonna drive a Ford, or if you're gonna drive a Lexus or something, you know? If you're giving everybody the same amount of money, the people who want the Lexus are gonna pay the difference. Does that make sense?
Yep.
In Iowa, though, you know, there's no concern about network.
Yeah, the biggest, the biggest rumbling that you probably are gonna hear is probably chiropractors. Because of, it's just that the chiropractors are a little different. And we can, you know, if we decide to go down that path, we can talk through that at open enrollment, that that might be different for them.
Is it, there's, there's a smaller pool of HMO.
Right.
Right.
Chiropractors, so if that's what you want to do, which you just.
I, I think one of the, and this is again, it's not something, Cindy, we'll have how much time to digest all this before we need to make a decision.
Well, like maybe 10? Just kidding, just kidding.
We're not lame in town.
Just, no, I'm just kidding.
Say, well, all right, we're on.
No, 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 no. You, if you could make a decision maybe by mid-March or so, I would say we probably want to, like to have meetings sometime in April or May timeframe. So, just, or end of March, just plenty of time that we can get booklets produced and meetings scheduled and those types of things.
Good.
But, but it's not necessary today.
Well, I, so thanks for the extra time, Cindy.
You're welcome.
No.
But one of the things that we have talked about as a board, and we've talked about it for years, is that the cost differential between the HMO and the PPO plan does not accurately represent the value of those plans. And what you're saying is we need to, the proposal potentially is to adjust that to contemplate the additional value in a PPO plan. Not that you're losing anything in the HMO.
Yeah, you said additional value in the PPO, and I would say additional cost.
Well, the additional cost, but when you're talking about the difference between a Cadillac and a, and a whatever, that's value to me, all right? It's valuable that I can go out of state with more, I guess, less hurdles I have to drag. An HMO plan doesn't prevent you from doing that. There's just more you gotta go through to get there.
Right. If you're out of state with the HMO, what would happen is it has to be some sort of a medical emergent. You know what I mean?
Or referral, yeah.
Or referral or something. But yeah, for the most part, if you're in Iowa, your network is gonna be similar. And we've set the plans up there similar as well. It's just ones on, it falls HMO, one falls PPO. In the old days, it used to make a lot bigger difference than it does now.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, agreed.
Okay.
But emergency is the same worldwide. It doesn't matter which plan.
Doesn't matter what plan.
Doesn't matter if you're on vacation in Florida or on, in business in, you know, Chicago.
Okay.
Emergency is the same.
And then the only other thing I would add to that is if something there, you're like, I would like you to tweak it a little bit here and here and see what it looks like, we certainly are happy to do that. So, these aren't, you have to pick this one or this one. It's, these are two examples, and if you like them, great. And if you don't, you wanna see something different, you just have to let us know and we'll update and send it over.
Perfect.
Okay.
From a dental perspective, if you go to page 14, I think we're gonna skip that really because at the end of the day, page 15 is the increase. And where the increase in cost comes from dental is that they are increasing our fixed costs, $353. Now, to caveat that, our admin fee is increasing from five, so if you go down to the renewal highlights at the bottom, they gave us a one-year rate guarantee at $5.82 per employee per month. What we're showing you above is the $5.87 per employee per month, which is a three-year rate guarantee. We can do one if you want. But I just thought maybe you'd be happy that to have three of, knowing that that rate's not going to change for the next three years from an admin perspective. If you say, you know what, I'd rather save the five cents and see what happens next year, we certainly can do that. When we've sent this through, when we sent this through to the, to our people at Holmes Murphy and looked through it, we really think there's no reason. and looked through it, we really think there's no reason for you to increase the cost you're charging today, that you should just leave everything the same. At point-two percent, it doesn't make sense to go through the payroll process, to update everyone, only to, you know, for such a low amount of money. We would say leave it where it is today.
If you're gonna praise your employees, the fifty-nine percent of in-network and preventive is a really good account. And people, that's the whole concept of dentist, dental care is preventive, so that's a really good. And then you've got about seventy-five percent of your people using the benefits, that's very, very high. But it's kind of counterintuitive, people pay premium, or premiums pay, and then they don't go. So I've got cases where forty percent going. So that, if you wanna praise people, those are good statistics.
Sure.
Page sixteen, I'm not even gonna go through, you can see there that all of these are in rate guarantees, some of them are through twenty-three, and some of them are just to next year in twenty-two. You had asked about some disability options, and what does that look like? So what we're showing you on page seventeen is, is short-term disability on the top, and long-term disability at the bottom. The short-term disability is sixty percent of their weekly earnings to a thousand dollars per week. The benefits begin zero day for injury, so if you go to hospital, you're, you know, you, you get injured, they start right away, if you're illness, they wait seven days, and then they start, so it's zero, seven, okay? The pre-existing is three, three, twelve. Now, that is on voluntary, if we decided to do it voluntary versus the county pay. So three, three, twelve means, I have, where you've treated in the past three months, you know, are you still being treated in the, the current three months, and then you have a twelve-month waiting period. And so, all of a sudden, that, my head was like-
No, no, you're good.
And so if you paid for the cost of the short-term disability, employer paid, the benefit, it says here, benefit taxable, so there's two ways to do this. You can pay for the premium and the benefit then, meaning when I get paid my short-term disability benefit, they take taxes out just like I do when I get paid my payroll check. Or, at the end of the year, you can, you could tax the premium that they paid, so then when they get the benefit, it comes out tax-free. So now, all of a sudden, I'm not paying taxes on that. The, the tax on the premium's way cheaper, right, than the tax on the benefit, if you have to use it. Okay? So that's how you could do that, to get that away from benefit, the benefit to be taxable if you wanted. In total, it's point-three-three-two is the rate, thirty-three-point-two cents. The volume would be ninety-seven thousand, nine hundred and twelve, and the total cost for a year, thirty-nine thousand and eight dollars, if, if the county pays that cost. If the, if you do it on a voluntary basis, you pay it after-tax benefit, the benefit is not taxable then, but that's an age-rated cost, so based on every person's age. And then we gave you a few examples, if they had a salary of fifty thousand, they were aged thirty to thirty-four, the monthly cost would be thirty-four dollars. If I had a salary, same salary, but my, I was thirty-five to thirty-nine, it's twenty-four, twenty-three. And it looks a little bit weird that it does that, but it's because of thirty to thirty-four is the baby age. And so it kind of looks like it's a little backwards, but it's, it's just the way it kind of works out sometimes. Then the long-term disability options, sixty percent of monthly earnings to five thousand per month. Your benefit begins on the ninetieth day, why ninety? Because the short term ended at thirteen weeks, and that would be when, so they would connect themselves, right? And that's up to five thousand a month. Again, two years, own occupation, so if I was out on long-term disability for two years, I get paid at my own occupation, and then I get paid until social security, normal retirement age, okay? Six, six, twelve is this one, same thing as the last one, have you been treated in the last, you know, diagnosed in the last six months, treated in the current six months, and, and a twelve-month pre-existing waiting period. Again, that is on both options here, okay? So that doesn't, that, that's on both long-term disability options here. Same thing with the taxable benefit for the employer paid. This cost for this one is thirty-four-point-five cents. On the volume is seven hundred and twelve thousand, five thirty-three, and it's twenty-nine dollars, or twenty-nine thousand, four hundred and ninety-eight dollars total cost annual, if you put in a long-term disability. They both don't have to, you can say, you know what, we're gonna pay for the long-term disability, and we're gonna offer short-term disability on a voluntary basis. So you don't have to do, you don't have to pay both, or pay neither, you can cho, pick and choose, I wanna let them do voluntary for both, I wanna do, you know, we wanna pay for the one, but we want them to pay for the other one. So it's up to you, however, if you decide you wanted to do something like that, however you wanna structure it.
How would, how would one choose which one they wanna take? To me, it looks to me like, if you're really concerned about being disabled, you almost have, have both plans, so you wouldn't know.
Right, but what I'm saying is, as an employer, you can choose whether you wanna offer it voluntarily to the employees, or you want to pay for it. And so then the employee, at a form of voluntary perspective, the employee has to understand that, I have no income if I don't buy this. Like, if I get sick, I have no income, and so that's then their decision on-
But they don't know for how long, so they don't know which to buy, the buy short-term or long-term.
Well, I mean, so, so Steve, just think about it, some, some people can go ninety days without a paycheck, some people can't.
Think of short-term.
So that's, that's your short term.
Short-term is the gap, Steve, between.
Yeah, so, do that three months.
But you could offer, I mean, if we paid, like, if we chose to do this, you could choose to offer one, and then they could pick up the other one, is what you're saying? Or you could offer both on, and not, you know?
And not charge them, or you can say, you know what, I like the idea of offering disability, we don't wanna pay for it, we don't wanna get in the disability business, but if they wanna buy it, we can buy it on a voluntary basis.
Right.
That's up to you. I do have people that buy the long-term and let their employees choose the short-term, so that at least after ninety days, they're gonna be covered. I have people that go the other way, too, and say, you know what, I'll buy the short-term, if they want it after that, they can buy the long. I mean, it just, it depends on the employer and what, what kind of is important to you and, and your employees.
One of the things we'd have to think about, and you, and you correct me if I'm wrong here, Cindy, most of the disability plans that I know of in the private sector are based on different, they're based on, what do we call it? PTO plans. They're not based on the kind of vacation sick leave plan that we have right now, which is an accrual-based plan that, we've got people with bank sick leave for-
Right. And so there is a possible, so one thing that you can do with, like, the short-term disability is say, okay, you have to use your sick leave bank before we get into the short-term disability.
So you can build that-
So we can build it so that, that you, you work through that sick time, because otherwise, you've got that bank of money that you're continuing to carry on the books.
Yep.
And that's, so we can work through some of that and figure out which way is, is the best way to go. We just have to, you know-
You have to have it in writing.
Yeah.
And treat everybody the same.
Yeah, okay, good, good.
What company is this through?
Very good, thank you.
Same company that, the life, Hartford, yes, thank you.
Do you have, do you have a lot of people that offer disability options?
Yes. It's really, I would say, more prevalent maybe in the private sector, where they would offer more. But some, a lot of my public stuff offers the long-term side, and may not offer short-term.
Okay.
That would, that's pretty common for what, for my block of business. Not that I'm saying nobody does the short-term, I'm just saying, in the private sector, it seems like we see more of that than in the public side.
Yeah, I would say either long or short-term disability is probably offered in eighty-five, ninety percent of our cases. I would say, depending on your PTO plan and your sick leave plan, I would say of those ninety percent, I would say seventy-five pay for long-term, and put short-term on a voluntary basis, where the employee buys it if they want it or need it, depending on their own condition, and depending on how much time they've got accrued into their, into your PTO.
Sure.
But we can write the policy where everybody clearly understands what the obligation is by the, by the individual.
Because even the-
I mean, Steve, I, I mean, I, I have, I mean, at my other, my private job, I've got both, I travel a lot. And when you get to a certain age, you wanna make sure you have that covered. They're, I think they're bad.
True.
I wasn't making any, there's time about me, Cindy.
I know, I know.
Even if you think about your current employees that have, that we allow the ninety days of sick leave bank, you know, even if you did the long-term, you know, that, they would get to the long-term, and then you offer long-term.
Right.
Right, and that's, that actually is a really great point, because what you could do then is offer the short-term on a voluntary basis, because then, as you have new hires coming in, if they have babies or whatever, at least they have-
Covered.
Something, because, you know, it does, it takes a while to accrue that type of time.
Then your older employees who've been able to bank the time, they, they probably wouldn't need to buy the short-term, and they would just wait till the long-term kicked in.
Could be a way to phase that in, yeah, no, good, good.
Thank you.
The next page is compliance, and, and honestly, we've been going through this stuff with Lisa, so I don't think we need to spend a lot of time on it. We talked about your renewal decisions, there is benchmarking in the appendix, and unless you have more questions, I think that pretty much covers your renewal for the year.
I appreciate it, Cindy, thank you. Steve and Keisha, do you have questions?
Not at this point, I just wanna be able to-
As you go over, and, and kind of go through it, if you do, just send me an email.
Okay, yeah, no, I will.
Whatever you have, or, you've got-
Yeah, I was, I was just gonna add one more comment on the medical trend right now, and trend means-
Oh, thank you.
Paying for tomorrow's claims with today's dollars. Like, like, say Steve has appendix out today, and it costs a thousand dollars. A year from now, trend would be that thousand dollars plus nine percent, okay? So everybody thinks that trend is inflation, and inflation really does not happen in the medical community. Trend is more a combination of cost of technology and cost of drugs, okay, as Cindy mentioned that. And then you gotta remember that, you know, unless we're constantly hiring nineteen-year-old males, our group is getting a year older each year. So if you look at your ten-and-a-half percent compared to trend, which is no large claims, no serious claims, you're right in the game.
Right in the game.
Right in the game, and you've had some, some large losses. So I, I guess my bottom point is that I, I feel that ten-and-a-half percent is a fair renewal.
It was fair.
Yeah.
That's a good, that's a good point, I'm glad you brought that up. I mean, sometimes you can see those numbers, and you can go, wait a minute, we've had these, we've had these very favorable renewals. Favorable from the standpoint of, they've been, what, two percent, Cindy?
Four, I think, or something.
Four, four, no increase. I mean, we've made a few with no increases, we've had a few twos, fives, I mean, we, we're all, but we're kind of jacked up a little bit this year, just because of-
Large claims.
Give me a sense, Cindy, and for the plan that we offer, I mean, are we, if we benchmarked ourselves against other public employers, are we good, bad? Are we, where, where are we at in that spectrum from what you see?
Last three pages of your notebook.
Oh.
Good, great.
No, I didn't wanna jump to the conclusion, but-
No, Cindy said we've got benchmarking in there, so you can take a look at your plan compared to others.
Yeah, the benchmark here is against our block of business, though, but I can, we can change this to public entities, and give you one that's just you against the public entities that are in our book. And that will give you a good idea of that.
That would be, I think, good for us.
It would be better than, than this, I mean, this one's great, because it gives you where, you know, where the world is, but honestly, I think we've, I'll just ask them to rerun it for public entities.
That would be great, thank you.
And then you'll have that, and I'll send that over to you, and I think that's enough.
So Steve, Keisha, we'll take some time to, you guys take some time to digest all this, and then Cindy, you said by mid-March?
If you can, yeah. If you decide that ten is too much to bite off, and you want to look at some alternates and do some other things, we can do that, too, you just have to tell us kind of what you're thinking.
In our, in our budget discussions, I, I don't think we really wanna make a lot of material changes. Now, now the disability side, we may, we may decide to add some of those components, or at least think about adding those components, but the PPO, HMO discussion, I think we have to have as a board, definitely. And we've had these thoughts for a number of years about the cost differential. So those are, if, if I look at it macro, Cindy, those are the two big areas for us right now to, to really think about, chew on based on this, but an overall change of carrier, we're, we're not ready for that right now. So we, we, we bit off a lot this year. So I think, you know, we'll take a break from all that, so.
Thank you guys for coming.
Yes.
You're welcome.
Thank you for the presentation.
It's, it's good to see people.
Yes, yes.
And not on Zoom.
Thank you, very much.
Yes, yes.
All right, with that, would entertain a motion to close discussion on this item?
Make motion to close discussion.
Second?
Johnner?
Hi.
McCollum?
Hi.
Raimi?
Hi, very good.
Next, we're back revisiting the library's request for funding for FY twenty-one, twenty-two. Steve, Keisha, did you get a chance to think about, I think the request was for five thousand dollars?
It was an additional one thousand.
Or additional one thousand?
Yep, yep.
From our last one. Did you get a chance to think about that?
Yep, yep, I did. It's my understanding, we increased, Jake, is that correct, in twenty nineteen to ninety-five? So in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, we were at ninety, and twenty nineteen to twenty twenty, we increased to ninety-five, is that correct? If I'm reading that right?
In nineteen twenty, was the-
Yep, yep, nineteen twenty, yep, 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 okay.
And, you know, I did some, I did some investigation, just looking at what people are getting paid at our libraries. And I need to validate this, to be certain, but I think, I think, aren't the Pella librarians, isn't their average salary around ninety thousand a year?
I don't know if we have somebody on, I don't know if it's, we have some librarians on, I know, but I don't-
Do we have some of the librarians on?
Yep, yep. Cause I visited the, the Joel, and talked to her, Pleasantville's, had a good conversation.
We hear you now, Lori.
Oh, hello. I lost my speaker. I'm not a good zoomer.
Neither am I.
Neither, so we're figuring it out. Um, yeah, you've got some librarians on, I don't make ninety thousand dollars a year, if you wanted to give me that, I would-
Well, I just wanted to make sure, not that that's good, bad, or indifferent, that's what people decide, you know, a community decides to pay their librarians, but, you know, from a Marion County standpoint, that would be a, that would be a really good salary.
It would.
But, but am I, am I accurate, though, that, that that's close to what, I, I was reading through some of the minutes of their, their library board, and it looks like that's roughly the average, am I, am I accurate, I just wanna make sure I'm accurate.
Mara?
There's, there's Rosalyn.
Ros, Rosalyn?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
What, Rosalyn, what, what, do you know what the librarians make, on average, if we went through Knoxville, Pella?
Directors, I assume you're talking of director-
Or average salary, I don't care.
Oh, salary, yes, I mean, if you go to the state library website, you can actually compare. Uh, now, BUSTY is a smaller library, and so they're considered an A library, because it's, it's based on population. Knoxville, for example, is an E-sized library, and Pella is like an F-sized library.
Melcher's a C.
And Melcher's a C-sized library, so we're all different sizes, the ninety thousand dollars is actually divided between the five of us. And it's, and it's for library services.
It's not.
It's not, it's not as salary.
No, they were asking how much Pella makes as a salary.
Oh, um, I think, I think Marasia, but I, I'm not sure, uh, we can look it up.
I'm trying.
But I believe it's, I, I don't know, I guess I don't know.
I just wanted to make sure my, I was reading, and it's correct.
Correct, yeah.
So I don't go to their meetings or anything like that. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna make the assumption I'm probably pretty close.
That's fine.
At least for Pella, I don't know Knoxville or the others, although the couple did volunteer for more money, so that's good, so it's good. So what, what do you guys think?
I think, my personal feeling is that, since we just increased them from ninety to ninety-five not too long ago, in twenty eighteen to twenty nineteen, I would prefer to just keep them at ninety-five.
That's my thoughts also. I mean, in a twenty year, you know, it's raised thirty-five, what, thirty-five thousand, thirty thousand?
Yeah.
Um, hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes, yes.
Hey, um, this is Joel, and click with the web shade on Memorial Library, and I can just say that this library doesn't make that much, and we are just grateful for our doors to be open right at the moment, so any little bit, we are just blessed to have- and we are just grateful for our doors to be open right at the moment. So any little bit, we are just blessed to have whatever little amount of money we can receive just to keep our doors open. So please take that into effect too, because, um, yes, thank you.
When, when, and, and refresh my memories, folks, from the libraries, when you divide up the money that we give you, how is it allocated again? Because if I look at, and I'm not trying to pick on Pella, but, but that's a library with a lot of resources, obviously, a larger community. But for like what you just said, for the web, for what you got in Bussie and Pleasantville, do you allocate it so you can help the smaller libraries stay open and do things differently? And is there an allocation here?
Yep.
Yes, the allocation.
So Pella gets sixty-three percent of the total?
There's, they divide four thousand dollars to each one. Each gets a four thousand dollar base and then whatever's left.
Okay, so it's just people?
It's divided by checkouts to people living in the unincorporated area.
Okay. Why wouldn't you wait this for the rural folks, the more rural libraries?
I don't think Pleasantville's, I think Pleasantville's a private library.
It is currently. I spoke with Joel and
Oh, it's a private library?
Yeah, well, and
It's going public.
Yeah, it's going public, yes.
If the city, Pleasantville takes it over, which is, I think, the intention.
Yep, it is their intent. I did speak with the city.
And it's not that I want to, you know, spend a lot of time. If you two are okay with, uh, last year's funding, I will.
That's what I'm
Then I'm fine with that and I would entertain a motion on that.
Make motion, we approve, uh, for the library funding at ninety-five thousand.
Second.
McCombs?
Hi.
Raimi?
Hi.
Johnner?
Hi.
Very good. Thank you. Ladies, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Joel.
Thanks.
Next, Economic Development District. This has been one that we've had up for a while. I don't know if he's on for that. Is anybody on for that?
Mark, um, we have Andrew Collins from the MPO to talk with us about the EDD. Um, he is the one that presented, I believe, him and Gutter, um, to you all when you had, um, meetings with them with the city.
Okay.
Greetings. Can you hear me?
I can, I can.
Excellent. Thank you, Carla. Thank you, uh, board for having me. Um, I will note that this presentation is very similar to the one you have seen before, so I'll try to move a little bit more quickly through it. But if you do have any questions as I'm going through, I'd be happy to answer them. So I'll go ahead and get started. Uh, thank you for having me again. I'm here to talk about economic development districts and how it relates to central Iowa. So on the maps on the screen before you, you can see that on the left, uh, you can see where economic development districts are across the United States. They cover areas very large, very rural areas and everyone between. Um, and on the map on the right, you can see that in Iowa, there's only one area that's not covered by an existing economic development district. Uh, and that's central Iowa. Those are seven counties. They, they are the counties of Boone, Dallas, Story, Jasper, Polk, Marion and Warren. Um, so we are the only area in state without a designated, EDD designated designation, excuse me, from the United States Economic Development Administration. Um, the reason why we're bringing this up is because we are now qualified to form an EDD due to the national merger declaration from the COVID-nineteen pandemic. So I'll note that this is the first time that we've been eligible to form this kind of district since the two thousand eight ones. And just to let you know that we're not the only ones doing this, uh, in addition to our region, both the Indianapolis area as well as the St. Louis area are going down this economic development district designation path as well. Now, excellent. Thank you. So what is an economic development district? Well, at its most basic function, it's a designation by the U.S. Economic Development Administration. So this designation is given to regions that have experienced economic distress. Traditionally, we do not, here in central Iowa, meet the metrics that the EDA looks at when it comes to doing an EDD designation. But through pandemics or natural, excuse me, presidentially declared disaster declaration, we're able to kind of circumvent the traditional means and apply for designation that way. So these are regions, so these regions are multi-jurisdictional entities. Um, they are comprised of multiple counties and they've planned for the economic resiliency of both the region and its member communities. And so this is also where we like to point out what it's not. So an EDD is not like a chamber of commerce or like the greater joint partnership. It's not like your traditional EDO offices that the city or counties will have, or it's not like an economic development corporation. Um, and an economic development district does not recruit business. It doesn't recruit industry. Um, it's more geared towards focusing its efforts on supporting the cities and counties in a region. So much like your EDO offices will look at business retention, recruiting business, recruiting industries, EDD take, EDDs take a little more holistic approach at, uh, working with local communities, um, to further economic development. So they're basically two sides of the same coin going towards the same effort. Next slide. So what are the benefits of doing this? Well, one, uh, EDA, EDDs, excuse me, are the first entities to receive funding during major disasters from EDA. So for example, central Iowa missed out on four hundred seventy thousand dollars in no match funding from the CARES Act. All EDDs in Iowa got that money. Um, we just did not, they're using that money across the state to support COVID-nineteen related, uh, or support coming out of COVID-nineteen impacts, but basically utilizing that money and supporting the existing organizations that are already there. Um, in addition to those kind of one-off events though, I'll point out that there's also annual funding that's provided for higher staff and provide staff time to administer the EDD itself. This requires local match. Um, right now, we're looking at about seventy thousand dollars in funding that would be made available every year from the EDA for that, which would require a seventy thousand dollar local match from the region. So in addition to the funding side though, it improves applications and just makes applications for federal funding, uh, more appealing and look better as they move forward through their process. So in addition to the funding, there's also staff support that I mentioned that, uh, planning grant has provides for that. Uh, so the staff support would be utilized for applications, administration of grants. Uh, not just EDA grants though, we're looking at all types of federal grants, even state grants or even local grants, I guess, are eligible to, to be, um, applied for and administered through this. Uh, so it also helps identify funding opportunities, um, at various levels of government. But also provides that staff support, technical assistance, if you will, to kind of fill gaps by providing supports, uh, for projects on behalf of the member community. So if a community has a project that may or may not move forward, they can kind of look to this entity or this assistance to be able to push that project over the hump. And the last thing I'll mention too is the regional plan. In order to do this, we have to have what's called a comprehensive economic development strategy or SEDS. So that just catalogs priority projects, um, in addition to improving their competitiveness for grant applications. It doesn't take away anything that's already being done now. Uh, it, it supports existing plans. There are a couple mentioned on the screen. But basically, it just takes what's being done now, repackages it so that we can, uh, make sure it meets all the requirements and how it's, how it's required to be formatted by the federal government. Next slide. So examples of federal funding that just Iowa's received from the ED, uh, from EDA through economic development districts. Uh, I won't necessarily go through all these, but would like to highlight the one point seven million City of Cedar Rapids got. That was to help relocate a water main for flood resiliency. Couple of community colleges got some funding, um, for skills training, um, in addition to technical assistance and training for job retention. Uh, Sioux City got money for their Gateway Airport project and Diresville got money for their field of green projects. I will mention that these are just a snippet of projects and it's, and are supposed to be examples. This is by no means an exhaustive list. Uh, there were a lot more projects that were, uh, received across the state, but they kind of fit these kind of similar categories. Next slide. So what would it take or what is it, does it take to form that economic development district? Well, first, we have to have every county be part of that presidentially declared disaster declaration, which has already been done. Um, so in addition to that, uh, the federal government puts certain requirements on the board makeup and the board structure of the entity that's, um, requesting the designation. So that agency has to have a private, adequate private representation on the board. So in order to push more, in order to make sure we meet all those specific requirements, there's going to be new organization formed. Um, that's something we're working on right now, uh, to make sure that we, we can hit all those bullet points. So in addition to that, we have to have support from all the community, excuse me, counties within the economic development district area. We also have to encourage the state and then after mentioned, local match has to be prepared. So when it comes to support from the counties, and that's what I'm here today to talk to you about, uh, that's kind of a two-step process. So in order to form the economic development district itself, we have to have resolution support from all the counties that the EDD would cover. That resolution of support doesn't mean that that county has to join economic development district organization later on. It just means that county supports the creation of the development district and, uh, its efforts to, to move the region forward. So what it really does to, and why it's so important that counties, um, look at passing that resolution early on in the process, is that if a county doesn't pass that resolution of support, um, the cities in that county are not eligible to join economic development district later on. So it essentially, by signing that resolution, it does give everyone a choice later on whether or not that jurisdiction would like to join the resulting organization or the economic development district. Uh, and, and lastly, mention the SEDS. I mentioned that before, but it needs to be created. We're working, we're working on that right now as well. Uh, but think of it like the long-range transportation plan that SERPA does, but instead of focusing on transportation, it's economic. This is the last, and this is the last slide, slide that I have. Uh, so I will pause for questions after this. But basically, we're, we're, we've kind of moved past meeting with stakeholders in all the counties. What we really kind of are in the meat of and kind of finishing up right now is meeting with kind of our supervisors. Right now, to date, we have four resolutions of support. So those have been passed in Warren County, Story County, Jasper County, and then as of about ten minutes ago, Polk County. So we have those four on hand. We spoke with Boone County Board of Supervisors last week. They will be passing their resolution tomorrow. Um, and then after making, meeting with you, uh, our last point of contact that we still need to do is with Dallas County. Not that we haven't met with that Dallas County stakeholders. In fact, we received resolution support from a couple of cities as well as the county alliance, the economic development alliance there. Um, we just have not formally done, uh, the presentation to supervisors yet. But, uh, we are, we are moving path to through that process right now. Um, again, reiterating that the resolution of support doesn't commit anybody to joining anything, just that they're, that the county supports this process. Uh, and then lastly, we'll need State of Iowa, the governor, to support the designation request as well. We met, uh, with IEDA Director Debbie Durham last week, uh, to see if we could help enlist her in that process. She did indicate that, that she would help, uh, us through getting whatever requirements from the state we So we've kind of hit that, um, process, moving through it. And so I guess the next steps, when we move on, will be starting that, there, excuse me, continuing that SEDS development process and getting the new jurisdiction, or excuse me, new entity off the ground. So with that, I'll pause and let, uh, open it up for questions.
Andrew, when you, when you say the agency, is that, would that be any city within, let's just, let's just take Marion County for would that be, any city within Marion County would be an agency, correct?
Yeah, jur, any jurisdiction, right.
Okay. And, but then in order to be eligible to receive any funds, they would have to have a representation on a board to be formed later?
No, that's a, that's a good clarification point. So the new organization basically, uh, doesn't decide where funding goes. Now, during those one-off events, yes, but traditionally, you know, those don't happen very often. So if you don't have a major disaster happening during that time, um, it, the new organization basically, uh, is there to have staff that helps communities apply for grants to other entities such as EDA, HUD, um, DOT, IEDA, you know, all those other outside agencies. So the, the, the resulting organization is just there to receive the planning dollars, um, oversee SEDS development, um, making sure that, you know, staff's doing projects for communities, that sort of thing. It's not like SERPA or the MPO where you have to have representation on the board to receive funds.
Okay. I'm, I'm a little confused. If, if it's an economic development district and it's tied to a disaster? I mean, to, to receive funding?
To receive the designation, yes. Once you receive designation from EDA, that's, you don't have to ask for designation again. You are designated that moving forward.
But
The reason why it's tied to disaster is because EDA sees itself as, uh, partially, as, as long-term economics. And during a disaster, you know, your economy is affected. So that kind of opens up the avenue for central Iowa to apply for designation. Because as we move forward, we really honestly don't know the long-term impacts COVID-nineteen will have on the economy. It could be five, ten years from now that we're still seeing the effects of that. So EDA makes, uh, it more open to be able to get that, that designation, the EDD designation.
So you're de, you're de, you're designated because of the disaster, but, but if, if, if you had a project, it wouldn't have to be disaster-related to, to request funds, correct? And is it, will, will it be a competitive, competitive funding?
It, it is competitive. Um, EDA does have disaster-related funds, just like a lot of, um, federal government or federal agencies do. Uh, I, I think though that, that, that once you're designated though, that really opens up avenues for applying for, for additional funding, is my thing.
Well, and the grants, the grants that you could apply to, once we have an economic development district created, would be a lot of different infrastructure-type grants like you saw in the examples or other economic development grants available through EDA or many other state and federal agencies. So really, the function of the EDD is really as a grant writer for the cities and for the county if we choose to join. Uh, but it really allows them to have function for some of their projects that they're working on, economic-related projects for that accessing those funds through helping, having help in writing those grant applications.
So basically, it's just a door opener.
Uh huh.
Andrew?
Absolutely, yeah. Additional resources for local communities to be able to put you infrastructure project.
Andrew, so that I understand from my notes, funding administration is seventy thousand? Is that per county?
No, no, that's across the region.
Okay.
So you, you would divide that seventy thousand up. Uh, we've done it just on a per capita basis. Uh, we use fifteen cents a person as just an example, assuming some jurisdictions will be out because this is so new. So that's the number we're getting. Fifteen cents a person, at least in the
And what was the expectation for Marion County?
Uh, how much it would cost Marion County?
Yeah.
Uh, I think we looked that up, Carla. Um, what, the unincorporated portion of Marion County?
Yeah, it depends on if the county, if the county chooses to only do it, it would be the unincorporated that we would pay for. Um, the cities could then choose to pay for the, the folks that live within their jurisdiction. So it's just over ten thousand, I think, people, um, in rural unincorporated.
Fifteen
So around fifteen hundred dollars.
Fifteen hundred bucks, yep, yep. Okay.
All right.
Thank you, Carla.
Now, Andrew, what happens if one of these decide not to join in? Are we then out because? Okay.
Uh, so let me just ask clarification. Are you, you mean the signing of the resolution or joining the organization?
Well, I guess I thought
Because you don't, so the signing of the resolution, I'll address that. So, um, that's an excellent point. We did ask EDA that their view is they want to see the region come in as one. Um, because you, we'd have, we have to make our point to EDA why we should be designated. Uh, and having the county not pass a resolution support, uh, would hinder that application. Now, that's
The other factor is by signing to, sign on the resolution, you are then also part of the SEDS document which sets the priorities. If the county chooses not to sign on, then you don't have, us or the cities don't have any role in developing that SEDS document which sets the priority, which when you go to apply for EDA, you have to have a SEDS document typically to be able to access their funding.
Yes. Now, uh, nothing, you don't, the, so cities and counties will get a choice whether they join the organization if they do. But we're also, we're also highlighting the fact that if you choose not to join now, it doesn't mean you can't join later. If you pass the resolution. It, it, all it does is open up a choice for jurisdictions.
But if we, if we don't sign it, then the cities don't, they don't have a choice.
They don't have a choice, exactly. They would not be able to access any of the funding or, um, technical assistance provided thereafter.
How is, uh, how is overhead covered in this, Andrew?
Yeah, so that Yeah, so that, the seventy thousand plus the seventy thousand, um that money is used to pay for all the overhead. There will, the, the idea right now is to hire the MPO to do the administration, since we provide that administration for MPO, CERPA, um the Housing Trust Fund. And so we kind of have the infrastructure in place to handle the auditing, the record keeping, that sort of thing. And that would be covered through the, the, the planning grant and local.
Okay, very good. Steve, Keisha, any questions for Andrew? Or discussion?
How, uh, I mean, when does the decision have to be made on this?
Yeah, we've talked about this a couple of times, at, at least once before. Andrew, what's the deadline?
Sorry, I didn't hear Steve's question.
What's the deadline?
For, for your vote, or for your decision? Um there really is no hard deadline, you don't have to vote today. Uh while, when we get started, as as we start in the SEDS process that Carla highlighted, um I think that we would like to have to know if the, if a county is going to be in that SEDS document or not, cause that greatly affects the data that we use. Um so we're getting started on that early next month as far as uh the data portion of it. So if you'd like to wait a little bit on and vote next time, that's fine. Um but if you're comfortable today, that's fine too. There's no hard deadlines, just we have to meet certain deadlines later this summer, and so we want to make sure.
What's the total annual cost to the county to belong to this?
The cost, the cost to just join or the cost to support the EDD is zero. The cost only comes in in the second phase if you decide to join or not. So today, the real talk is whether we want to be part of the economic development district or not. The cost to do that is zero. The only time it will come is after the organization is created, then there is a membership fee that would, we could choose to join or not to join. And same with the cities, at that point, they choose to join or not to join. But if we decide that we don't want to support the EDD, then the cities do not have an option to join or not join.
So what's that cost? Do we know that yet?
That, well, that's the, that's the.
No, for the annual, if we decide to join.
It it would be roughly, if we do it for the unincorporated, it'd be roughly around fifteen hundred, a thousand five hundred for the county portion.
Okay.
But we could choose not to do it and our, like, say Pleasantville and and Melcher could decide they want to do it, and we could decide not to be a member, but our county is then still part of the SEDS.
Supporting, yeah.
And we could at any time choose to join or not join on the second part of it. Um you could try it out for a year, see if it's utilized, um and see how much value it brings, and you could, you could drop off. But if the county does not support it, you don't have those options.
Right.
And that brings up a good point, Carla and Andrew. I think a lot of times we do things like this, but we don't always see what comes of that. So if it's something that you could come back and say, hey, this is what, you know, by joining this? Because I have a hard time wrapping around my head that we had to have a disaster before we could come into this. You know, I mean, we were the only ones, and and I, I know we talked about this when we had our one-on-one meeting. So it's kind of hard to think, oh, now we can join, and we're the only counties that worked, you know?
Well, I I think to dovetail on that, Andrew, is there a sunset to this? Disaster declarations do not tend to go in perpetuity, so.
Right, um, there is not, however, uh. No, I guess, there, it, there, there's a disaster declaration for the last two, two and a half years. Um we're, we're moving well within that right now. Uh but once we, once we get designated, it's not tied to disaster anymore, we're just designated.
Okay, that's what.
Yeah, so there's no, there is no sunset on the EDD, a lot of these EDDs in Iowa got designated once and then around. Without having to reapply for it.
Okay, very good, thank you. Uh discussion, questions, comments?
Yeah, I got one.
Okay, um, no.
Yeah, all, all this thing is all, all sounds good and everything, but I've also known, been, been involved in some of these other things that when we get tied to the bigger populated counties, when if it's on, if it usually when it gets to be a competitive thing, we, we really don't sometimes have the, the projects to compete with the counties or the other counties, or usually county always left out. And that's my only fear, Andrew, and you know where I'm coming from.
Yeah, and this is really not a pot of money you're applying to, this is the assistance to do the grant. So it's, it's, it's EDA money, it's other federal department money, it's state money. So what we're creating is a structure to help apply to the grants, not a pool of money to apply to.
Okay, all right, thank you, Carla.
Yeah, by by getting the designation, we get to play in the game of getting grant money.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Well, if you don't though, you don't get to play the game.
Well, and and the thing, and the thing is, I mean, the way this is structured, and we've all got our own opinions about, I think you can get the general sense, we don't like these kinds of things. Um we would like it to be where it would be fairly self-evident that COVID was a crisis and that people were impacted and we should get some dollars to help recover. It should be fairly straightforward and fairly simple instead of forming these different groups. And we could form this group and frankly, the project could be in Polk County. And that's could be the grant, and that could be what it's for, it may not be involved Marion County at all in that. But if we don't do it, then if our cities want to get access to these funds, they would be stopped.
Yeah, I, I don't have a problem with the con- with the overall concept at all.
I got all kinds of problems.
I, yeah, I just, yeah, I understand.
But I don't, but I also, this is, this is the game.
Yeah.
And at this level for us, the, the philosophical can't necessarily drive this because we don't want to keep our citizens from getting access to money.
Right.
If they have sewer projects, if Pleasantville wants to apply for something, if Bussy wants to apply, or Melcher wants to apply for something, we gotta give them a shot to get the cash.
I agree.
For fifteen hundred bucks.
Well, no.
Well, maybe, maybe.
Yeah, maybe.
We'll, we'll, we'll pass a resolution in support of it and then decide if we want to play.
Right.
So, anyway. And we don't have a resolution drawn.
I was gonna say, does Andrew have a template, maybe you can put that.
Andrew, do you have a te- a template for a resolution?
Sure, what I can do is we can set forward that on, and if you want to vote next time, after you see the resolution.
If you could do that and send that to Jake, that would be great.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So we'll put that on our next agenda.
Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carla.
Thank you.
No, thank you for having me.
Thank you very much. With that, I would entertain a motion to close discussion on this side.
Make motion to close discussion.
Second.
Raimi?
Hi.
Johnner?
Hi.
McCombs?
Hi.
Uh Marion County Humane Society. And this is a funding proposal, I believe, this is the time for funding proposals.
Hello, this is Leslie Vanderlanden with the Humane Society.
Hi, Leslie, thank you for joining us this morning.
Thank you for let, for letting us uh submit the proposal. Um I believe Emily has a PowerPoint.
Yes, that is correct.
Um, this is just our building, this picture is several years old, it's, it's starting to deteriorate somewhat. We are looking at um maybe getting a new roof and new siding at some point. Um we have to get a new playground put in this year. Um ours is just, an animal's gonna easily get out if we don't get it fixed. Um so if you want to go to the next slide, um this just kind of gives some information about how we evolved. Um we, we had to close for a while because the building had just deteriorated. And um so we, then we raised, I wasn't a part of the Humane Society at this point, but they raised over two hundred thirty thousand dollars so that we could open a new building. Um we wanted to get the best possible care to any of the animals in the counties and hopefully find their owners or find them a new home. Uh and that's what we do, we don't, we are not, a no-kill shelter now. Um so it's, it's basically us working to get animals adoptable, adoptable. Do you want to go to the next one, please? Um we have about between four and six hundred um dogs and cats every year that we, we adopt or own or reclaim, or every now and then we'll transfer them to another shelter for adoption because they've been in our shelter too long and we, we can't get them, you know, no one's interested in adopting that particular animal. Works the same way too, or works backwards too, we, we get a lot of animals from other shelters um and rescue groups because uh we do have a good um adoption rate. We are able to get, most of the animals we get in are out the door within a month or two, which is pretty good. And we're also a no-kill shelter, um which doesn't mean we, doesn't mean that we don't ever euthanize an animal. It just means we euthanize them if they're very sick and they can't be cured or if, if it's a vicious animal and the community is in danger. Um in the past, in the past, our fundings come from grants and fundraisers and donations from the community. Um we really couldn't have very many fundraisers last year due to COVID and what we were able to have didn't, weren't the, they weren't the big fundraisers. There's like our, our auction and um our 5K was virtual, so it really didn't work out. And so we just had to, we just have had to get by on what support the community can give us. Um grants went to the fire department and rescue service, which is understandable. Um and donations have been lower from the community because, you know, people worried about their job, their work hours, you know, et cetera, so. We are kind of hurting a little bit financially. And the idols, the idol situation, they made a bunch of changes that we have to comply with, otherwise we lose our license. So um they, they gave them to us in January of last year, and we were supposed to have them all done by July. But we got most of it done, but the play yard is one of those items that we just haven't had the funding for. I mean, the cost to redo our play yard is going to be, you know, around twelve thousand dollars. Um we need, this is uh where we approached it, I don't remember if it was last year or the year before, and we were late last year proposing to the county. Um we did look, um, we did look and we've been at least twelve years, so not thirteen at least, since we changed the pricing. Um so we really would like to see some sort of an increase this year.
What does that mean, the contract pricing? You say this, you say the city recognized the need for a price increase, but with the county did not?
Right, the, the county did not, the county did not give us an increase in, in um our contract, that was what we charged.
Okay, so it's not, it's just the overall contract, not the individual animals, okay, I got it.
Oh, no, no, we don't do that, we did, used to do that with some of the cities, but we quit doing that, it's just, it makes more sense just to charge a lump sum. And that way we don't mess with the fifty dollars, and if they want to keep their, you know, if they still are charged, they still charge the fifty dollar fine um for animals, animal large, but we don't have to include that in, you know, we're not including that, we're not, we're, we're not charging back for that. We're not charging them back for that now, so.
Can, can we go back a little bit, you, you said something about, did, are we taking animals from outside of Marion County?
Um we take them in if we have room, um and that's, and they do pay us to take them. Um they pay us like, it's sort of like an owner surrender, um however, it's not, not exactly, it's more like a rescue group or a um, or another shelter that's full. That way we can help keep, you know, help out those, you know, humane societies. And it helps us out as well because then we have animals to adopt out. We didn't have that many strays in Knoxville, or didn't have as many as usual in, in this area last year. So we really did depend on the rescues and um other shelters to transfer animals into us for adoption.
So why don't they cover those costs?
What's that?
Why don't they cover those costs if their costs are going up that much? And if we're accepting from out of, out of county, why are they not helping?
They do pay the surrender fee.
Oh.
Does the surrender fee, Leslie, cover?
They also keep, you know, the adoption fee from them as well. And we don't, if we adopt an animal out, that money's ours, no matter whether it came from Oskaloosa or wherever. And this is common practice between all humane societies, cause, because our goal is to help as many animals as possible find loving homes. That's our purpose, it's not, and of course, we have to have the money to sustain it, but if they are able to donate to us, which they do, or pay the surrender fee, then, you know, we're, it's just a win-win situation.
Leslie, in the past, I think you give us a breakdown, is that correct, of like what is administration costs and what other counties are giving, or what other cities are giving and stuff? I don't see that in this, is there any way that?
No, and part of the reason for that is because so many shelters have had to close due to lack of funding. Um and so they are having, like Jasper County, for example, they contacted us and proposed to, let us propose a contract to them. However, they didn't want to transport animals to Knoxville, so they, they are taking them to an animal, like a vet clinic in Newton now.
But even like Knoxville, what, versus what, you know, what maybe Knoxville, assuming we get them from Melcher? Did you, you bring them in for Melcher, you bring them in for Pleasantville?
Oh, yeah.
What they're, what they're contributing, you know?
Oh, okay, they are charged three dollars per capita, so three dollars per person in that city.
Okay.
Is that, is that pretty standard, three dollars per capita?
Um yes, it is, um that's what people are, are paying now, and it's just, uh people, the counties seem to like it a lot better because they don't have to try to collect fines. Um, well, that's not really true, I see, they, they don't have to guess what their bill's going to be every month. You know, um the cities have always been X amount plus fifty dollars a dog. So the way this has worked is we've just made it to a flat rate and whatever that city owes for the month or year, they pay the flat rate, so it's a lot easier for them to budget that way.
Counselor. I think some of the information that maybe we're missing is, do you, can you tell the board, how many animals did you have come through your doors in twenty twenty? How many were drop-offs from people who lived in Marion County versus what was it that you got from other shelters to come in? I, I guess, looking at, kind of, I'm looking at the board here, and one of the questions I think everyone in the room is asking is you're coming here asking for money today and saying, hey, you didn't give us as much money last year, but then at the same time, you're saying, we didn't have any animals this year, so we took animals from other communities because they didn't have the money to take care of their animals. So I think one of the struggles is, how much money does it take to operate your operation purely based on the animals from Marion County? You know, it's one thing to turn around and say, I think as, as uh Ms. Johnner said, yeah, you're, you're taking, if, if Oskaloosa wants to send you a dog, you're taking a fifty dollar drop-off fee from Oskaloosa. And if you adopt that animal out, maybe you're getting a couple hundred dollars, give or take. But what does it cost the residents of Marion County for us to take an Oskaloosa dog?
And how's it tell adoption?
And yeah, I, I think there's a lot, they want to know the dollars and cents and the numbers.
And I think a lot of it is, is because of, you know, when you're dealing with taxpayer money, Leslie, we have to be able to have a full, better understanding of where the, where this money is going, and when, especially when you're asking for an increase.
Okay, um, so your, your question is, I, I did do a breakdown for you and sent it to everybody of our animal, um where our animals came in from, first by city, um within Marion County.
Okay, I'll look for that.
Leslie, al- always got, and oh, I, I've got the PowerPoint you sent.
Yeah, that's what I was saying, it's all I.
Um I'd send that first, I can tell you what it.
Yeah, maybe you can just run through the numbers, that would be great.
Yeah, I got a. I gotta shrink my screen, sorry. I'm not the best at Zoom either, so. Okay, there we go, okay. I do have it open. Um, and do you want total for the year?
Sure, just give us the numbers.
Okay, county, we brought, we had a hundred and twenty animals come in from the county. From the city, we had a hundred and forty-eight. Melcher was fifty-five. Pleasantville was twenty-four, and Swan was three. That's, that's where our breakdown was.
Okay, and what about uh animals outside of county?
Um, I did not look up that, that information, um, so I would have to compile that.
And what is Knoxville currently giving you?
Next fiscal year, it'll be thirty thousand dollars a year.
Thirty, okay. And then Melcher, P-Ville, what, what, Pleasantville, what are they?
They are, hang on, I will have to open the contracts real quick because I don't remember that off the top of my head. Some of them have been quite a significant increase, so. Pleasantville, um, we did uh allow them to wait until um the next, till their fiscal year starts. To start to increase the price. Um, they're the only ones really asked, but um Bussy is one thousand two hundred and twenty-one per year.
Yeah, did Bussy give you any dogs?
Not last year, but they are planning on bringing a lot this year, they said. Um, they've, they've, I think they haven't been really controlling their animal, animal population and they now see the need to do that. So um, Melcher is paying uh thirty, three thousand seven hundred and five per year.
Thirty-three thousand?
No, 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 sorry, three thousand seven oh five. Pleasantville will be at five thousand ten.
Jake, what was our contribution last year?
Eighteen.
Eighteen, hundred and fifty dollars a dog is what he gave last year.
Well, I'm sorry, like, what was the question?
Yeah, I was just asking Jake what our breakdown last year, so we, we gave eighteen last year to, to the humane society. And that's been that way for a while, hasn't it?
Twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen, I believe it.
And that's about a hundred and eighty dollars a dog. One fifty, one fifty.
Does Powell law contribute?
No.
Kelly uses different, they go somewhere else.
Knoxville give thirty thousand, is that correct?
In July, it will be thirty thousand. The past fiscal year, it was twenty-five.
Okay, that's an increase, okay. And then, do you have what your, like, administration costs, overhead costs are?
Um, yeah, I think I do, at least for last year anyway. I, it'll take me just a second to pull that up. Sorry, I didn't.
No, it's all right.
Appreciate, yeah, no, we appreciate it.
And my computer is extremely slow.
Leslie, it's not fair putting puppies on the table.
Hey, I can just, I know, these are mine, these are mine that are on there. Here's, they are just crying because I'm not letting them in here.
Right. They're crying, they're crying, yeah, trying to get us up that, that fee.
Yes, that's right. Well, the rest of the PowerPoint's really supposed to, really supposed to cherish our experience, so. And but they're, you know, they're, they're true, um. I need to find my financials from boss mom. Sorry, this has taken me a minute.
Sorry, can you ballpark it, Leslie? Just, I don't want to make you dig through stuff. Just give us an idea of what your, what your annual budget is.
Uh, we want our budget or our operating expenses?
Just the annual budget and then what, what, what component of that is operating.
I really do have to look that up because I cannot tell you off the, off the top of my head.
Don't worry, don't worry about it. Don't worry about it.
I can send it to you.
Yeah, if you want to email.
Yeah, if you could just email that to us, that'd be great.
Sure, I can do that, no problem.
Okay, very good. Board, do you have any additional questions for Leslie?
Not at this point.
Steve?
Um, no.
Okay, very good. So what we'll do, uh, if you could think about this proposal. And Jake, let's put this on the agenda next meeting and we'll make a decision on uh this grant or funding request. Okay, then Leslie, if you could just get that sent to us in the, in the meantime, that'll be part.
Yeah, I can get it right away. It just takes me a minute to find it.
Nope, that's all right. I appreciate it. Very good.
All right, thank you.
Leslie, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to close discussion?
And I hope you guys did look at the, at the whole PowerPoint so you could see the things that we've done for some of the animals in Marion County that were brought in, so.
Yep.
No, we did, so thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
I'm a question to close discussion.
Is there, uh, we have a motion to close discussion. Is there a second?
Second.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
Raimi?
Aye, very good, thank you. Next, we have a, an appointment, uh, requested by Poli Community Development Commission, or Committee, sorry. Uh, term ending August first, twenty twenty-one. Kristy Vanderwo, Vanderbrut, is it, am I saying that right?
Vander, Vander, Vander what?
Vander what? Vanderwort?
Vanderbord.
Vanderbord? I'm not by them. All right, is there anybody, is this uh?
So I can, I can, oh, there's Kristy, actually.
Kristy, sorry, I'm asking you your last name, Kristy.
No problem, it's pretty much.
Now, see, I'm, 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 my, my ancestors are from Scotland. We just, we just paint our faces blue, that's all we know. But Kristy, thank you for your willingness to serve on this committee. Is there anything you'd like to add for the, for the board?
No, I'm actually a, a health native and moved away, was gone for twenty-seven years and moved back within the last year. And I'm really excited just to get can, reconnected in the community, um, a community that I love. So that's really why I threw my name in the hat.
Very good. Well, thank you again for coming on and your willingness to uh, to serve on this committee. Keisha, Steve, do you have any questions? Kristy?
No, I don't.
I appreciate it. Appreciate your stepping up, yep.
She sounds excited and I'm, I'm glad somebody volunteered.
Yeah, that's all right.
Yep.
Well, with that, I would entertain a motion to appoint Kristy to this term ending eight, one, two thousand twenty-one.
So moved.
Second.
McCombs?
Aye.
Raimi?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
Very good. Kristy, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Bye.
All right, next we have uh, uh, the twenty twenty-one federal poverty guy, guidelines for assistance through the VA. Mike? We do this every year. We reset.
Handle.
Yeah, so what, where, where are they at this year? Do you have it?
Yeah, it's up there. I, it's just a simple process from going online to the National Federal Poverty Guidelines chart that prints out all the time. And I just moved up the figures. It always jumps up a few dollars each year and keeping it at one twenty-five percent.
I was going to say, and we, that's traditionally been our number.
Traditional.
Yeah.
Has been for uh, going on nineteen years now for me. But I'd like to have it inside then. I've got some backup if I need it. And again, it's a guideline thing. Doesn't mean that I'll hold back to it if there's a real emergency or something like that. If someone really needs a little extra help, then I'll help them.
You can come outside of there, so, okay, very good. Steve, Keisha, questions for Steve or, or Mike?
No.
No.
No, I'm sorry.
We traditionally help this number. I think it's a good amount. Mike's got flexibility within his rules to make modifications if necessary, so. With that, I would entertain a motion uh approving these twenty twenty-one federal poverty guidelines for veterans affairs assistance.
I'll make that motion. For the ball.
Second.
Raimi?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
Next, we've got a class C native wine license for uh Grape Escape. This is for other service Sunday sales. Jake, any?
Yeah, I don't think, I, I don't think anybody's on, on line there. This is an annual, on regular for them. They have completed all their paperwork and have all their beverages, sends us notice then that they've turned everything in as required. I don't think we got any negative responses from any of the departments that we send these notices to, so.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Steve, Keisha, any questions?
No.
I would entertain a motion to approve this renewal.
Make motion to approve for the class C wine license renewal for Grape Escape.
Second.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
Raimi?
Aye.
Very good. Updates, Mr. McCombs?
Uh, Chris and I went to the courthouse here the other day and, and I believe we've come up with a solution to get that TV mounted. We can't drill holes in the elevator shaft, apparently. But we, we, we've come up with a plan to mount it above, above the elevator. But it'll be, it'll be freestanding off the floor on a framework, so, so we're going to get that done sooner or later. I have two meetings tomorrow at the same time. How am I do that?
Are you, are you good?
But then, uh, then hurt a Thursday. That's what I, what I've got going on.
Okay. Mr. Johnner?
Are we doing website updates? Are we doing, are we going to talk about that at all today? Was that on something?
Not, not to, not today, unless you're going to give me a, give us a real quick update on the website.
Yeah, we were, yeah, I thought.
It's on the agenda.
It's on the agenda, yeah. But it's not on this agenda, so.
On this agenda.
Yeah, so that's why.
I have it on the eight, I have it on.
I was like, because I think Andrew was going to do a website update, just to, real quick.
Well, um, I don't know, I must have screwed up.
All right.
Do we need to do anything different there?
Well, how about?
It's on this agenda, yeah.
Is it on the one, the?
Emily printed.
So I don't want to be posted to the public.
It's not, it is on the one on the post.
No, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking, yeah.
I think it was the one on the public, wasn't it?
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yep, yep, that's fine. We're probably going off of our packet. It was an ad, I think, yep.
Okay, sorry, I'm, I'm just going off what I got in front of me, so.
No, you're good.
That's because I was probably going to put it in your packet and then it was a late ad.
Got it, okay. How, how about this, um?
My bad.
No worries, no worries. Let's uh, let's do this next meeting. Let's get this on next meeting. Any other updates, Keisha?
Well, I mean, I don't think it would take long if we did discuss it, but you don't want to discuss it at this point.
Did we post it? Is this the one we posted to the public?
I think it was on the public.
Yeah, yes.
So it was a late ad and I think what I, the copy of the agenda that you have in your packet, I had already put in there before, that it got added in before.
Okay, so it, it was posted. So that's the only thing I want to make sure.
Yep, no, I agree, I agree, but I, but it was, yeah.
You had your packets Friday.
Yeah.
I, I brought your packets to you on Friday.
If we can just do that real quick, because that will help us to keep.
Absolutely, absolutely, let's, let's do it. Is Andrew on?
Yes, sir, I am here. Um, really, this is actually just a, a very quick um item. Um, guys, uh, it's something I sent to you via email. Um, and, and we're, we're working on the website very hard. And um, thank you for all the departments that have met with the team. The, one of the items that the web team came up with, um, in order to try to make our site feel, look and feel a little more professional, uh, was to, um, the idea to have um department head photos on each department page. And so really, we just wanted to talk and get, get your thoughts and, and, and if you're okay with that approval, to um get some quotes from some photographers to um basically take photos of, of each department head. So that they're all the same, they're all um, you know, a professional photo is what we're, we're asking for.
Yep, you know, when discussing this as, as a committee, um, I did think it was uh very wise. And, you know, as a, as a department head, especially to be able, when you have your page, people can reference it who it is, so.
Yeah, obviously, we're, we're going to be getting photos and, and other things for the site. But the actual, uh, right now, we have some departments that have photos, some that don't. They're not, none of them are the same. Uh, so you've got, even, even the board members have different photos of different backgrounds and things like that. And, and just to, to make it look and feel a little more professional, um, we thought it would make sense, at least for the department heads, um, on their page, to um have a, a professional photo um on, on everybody's page.
Are we, are we bringing anybody in to do that?
That's what we were gonna um do, have a.
Just asking to be able to solicit, to ask for bids.
Yep.
So, yeah, I'm fine with that.
Good.
And I think that's, that makes, that's good, makes sense. Steve, any objections to that?
No.
All right. Sounds good, Andrew, solicit some bids.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. Keisha, anything else?
No, um, planning and zoning, oh, and for Powell, just uh last night, development, quite a, always something moving there. Um, impact this week, but I'm not able to make. I have a conflict there, um, but otherwise, good, so I don't have anything else to update.
Great, thank you. Uh, mine are, let's see, we've got public, we've got board health today. Is that right, Kim?
I'm correct.
All right, we've got board health today, uh, which again, we'll be talking about vaccine rollout and some of those updates. I don't want to, wait till we have the meeting. I don't want you to tell the story ahead of the meeting, so. Uh, so we'll be doing that today. Uh, have a phone call this afternoon to begin the twenty-eight E process uh for the VA. So we'll be doing that with our legal counsel, financial counsel. Jake, I think you're on that call as well. Ed, I want to get you on that call. But we'll start the process of developing a draft. There actually is a draft in play. But we need to talk about that draft and see if that's something we're ready to submit to the city of Knoxville for review. We'll get that moving. Uh, I have talked with Michael on our financing uh for the VA, so bonding for that process. And so he's working on that as well. So those two balls are moving forward. The next steps in that process will be, uh, we have authorized Chris to solicit, start soliciting bids uh for the VA and start working on that. At some point, we'll have Chris come in, maybe even next meeting, Jake, give an update on that process. I'll touch base with him and see where we're at in that. But we want to get all those things lined up, the twenty-eight E, the, the bonding process and the bidding process, so that we can move forward in March to get this launched. And get this uh, and get phase, what we call this, maybe phase three of the VA project moving forward. I will be meeting, I hope, in the next week. I haven't told the mayor about this, but I want to meet with the mayor and uh get a sense on which confluence, plan, design they are, the. and get a sense on which confluence, plan, design they are, the Knoxville, the city council are most interested in. They were leaning toward plan number one, if you remember the drawings we had. I just want to confirm that with Mayor Hatch and see if that's still where they're leaning. Okay? Questions on that at all? It sounds like things are moving really well at Prairie Ridge, I'm sure they talked about that last night. I got an email from the, what the developer, thanking us again for our involvement in that and it sounds like they've pre-sold a considerable number of lots. So everything that we talked about with that project has gone very, very well. So very excited about the investment we've made there. Think that's all I have?
Okay.
All right. With that, we'll entertain a motion to close our open session.
Motion to close open session.
Second.
We're closing, we're closing the open and then we'll open the closed.
Johnner?
Hi.
McCombs?
Hi.
Raimi?
Hi.
We entertain a motion to go to the closed session.
Don't I have to close, do I, do you want me to go?
Oh, you gotta shut everything off.
February twenty-third, reconvene at a closed session.
All right, is there a motion to reopen the open session?
So moved.
Second.
McCombs?
Hi.
Raimi?
Hi.
Johnner?
Hi.
Very good, the results from our closed session discussion, there is no action needed by the board at this time. We will revisit that topic discussed at a later meeting date. With that, is there a motion to adjourn?
Make motion we adjourn.
Second.
Johnner?
Hi.
McCombs?
Hi.
Hi, we adjourn, thank you.